It's five o'clock, and the council accessioned order. I was hoping to have Superintendent McDowell here to talk about the elementary student drop-off. He's not here, I think it's an issue that we've talked long and hard about. I don't think we have a consensus on that, so I want to start with Tanya on enhancing the council effectiveness. Tanya, you have the floor.
Oh, good, thank you. Okay, so you have a little letter from me. And I think it's kind of self-explanatory. I just kind of laid out some ideas, I'm thinking maybe, at least, this is as much for me as everybody here, so I'm not preaching at you all. But I just thought we could probably work together maybe a little more effectively if we have a couple of things. One, I wouldn't mind a little training on Robert's rules. I mean granted, that's a lot of, I mean, there are a lot of picky rules. We don't need all of them, but we probably could use a primer on the basics. I think I could, I think it would help us be a little more efficient and a little more effective. And then, I think too, just some basics. I think, I think I was at a meeting the other day where they had right on the agenda that you have three minutes for public commenting. And I thought, you know what, that's, I like that. I think I'd like to do something like that. Certainly, I think we can relax the rules when need be, and we've done that. But I think it's important to set expectations. I would also like to have on our agendas just something about the kind of conduct and language that we require. I think at times we have struggled with some disparaging remarks here and there. And I know it was well-intended, but you know, there was somebody who wasn't here who was called kind of some awful names. Made me feel kind of, kind of sick. And I know it wasn't intended badly, but I think first of all, we should probably set a good example and then have this be a space where we expect, expect the same. I think it's, people elected every single one of us, so I think, you know, I want to say that I respect every single one of you because you've been elected, and I, I think we need to remember that at times. So anyway, didn't mean to sound preachy, so if I did, sorry.
I agree, I think that would be a good idea. After the last meeting, I got a book on Robert's rules, and I got one that's too extensive.
Yeah.
Seven hundred pages.
Oh my. Let's do that, okay Scott?
And I know that we don't follow the rules, that we're a little less formal here and everything, but still, I think we should have some better guidelines, and maybe we do. And I think a class on that would be good.
Well just, I'm sure there's, Scott, is that something that you could find, or do you want some help just finding a little mini?
I think, excuse me, staff can probably find something and work with Will on, what do you call it, a primer? On basic Robert rules.
Well that would be good, and not everything, of course. And you know, I know you can kind of use Robert's rules to the nth degree, and that could probably backfire. Don't include any of that, Scott. But if we, I would like to see us put on our agendas, kind of the, the rules of engagement, you know.
And they are, they do have to be on there.
That's too small for me.
Well, I was going to say, is there a way to?
Where is that?
Right at the very bottom of the board.
Well, hey. Then if that's the case, we need to just.
Did you increase the font size, or how would you say?
Well, it'd be bigger.
Well, you know, yeah, there are some seniors, a few seniors on board here, maybe even a few in the audience, right? You saw it. Oh no.
But you're so much younger than the rest of us.
I can tell you, at the Montague Council meetings, which I attend, whenever they talk about it's time for public comment, it does say, keep in mind, please limit your comments to three minutes.
Okay, yeah. I, and I know sometimes we've done that and sometimes we haven't, but it is, we also can relax the rules. I've been in situations where there wasn't that many people commenting, and it was a longer comment. And you know, so we don't have to like, you know, cut somebody off arbitrarily, you know what I mean? If we want to hear more from them, I guess. So, thank you for pointing that out. Could we just put it maybe at the top? Just humor me a little.
Just go along with down, huh?
And bigger font.
Well, I know that Brenda plays with the font a lot, because we try and keep everything on one page. So she does shrink down the top, so if this, we could play with that a little bit, yes.
Just expand your.
I'm sorry, I was going to say, where it says public comment, like number five is public comment. Just please limit your comments to three minutes.
Well, there's an asterisk there that tells you to go look at the bottom of the page.
That's true, it does.
Yeah, but you're right, we could make it more clear.
We do have an aging.
Bigger asterisk?
I'm not going to comment on that. But. Yes, sorry. But you know what, I like Steve's idea, because then it is right there, yeah. And we do have an aging population, at least.
And, and that should apply to people that are reading letters, to my opinion.
These new lifers I'm taking aren't going the other way. Getting younger.
You're getting younger.
Well, pass them over, Steve. So, anyway, I do appreciate everybody here, and I appreciate that you were elected. And you know what, we were elected to be leaders, and you know, these are times in which it's very common to see a lot of just people out there not being very civil. And I think we could, we could show, show how to do it, provide a good example. Thank you for my indulgence on that.
Does anyone else have any comments?
I agree. Sounds like a good idea to have a short course on our.
Yeah.
I think staff has direction on that. All right, let's move up to emergency purchases.
I just want to make sure I'm clear that I, I don't have any issue with the act of, you know, covering emergencies. I just kind of think that there should be a cap on it. I know different emergencies, I mean, you can't predict what's going to come up. But it just seems to me like it's too open-ended. I don't, you know, I don't know if anybody else feels that way or not, it's just an issue that. I, you know, like I said, I don't have any problem with, with the act of, of the manager being able to do an emergency purchase. I just think that there should be a cap on it. And if it's, if there's some type of an emergency and it's going to go over the cap, I don't know that one day is going to, you know, make a whole lot of difference. You know, can't you just call an emergency meeting in the council and get everybody together? I don't know what the rules are for sure. I think the mayor can, can call for a special meeting by yourself, can't you, Steve?
Yes, that's correct.
And is it two, two other council members if it's not the mayor or something like that? Can you call a special meeting?
Nope, it's the mayor or two council members. And we are required to give no less than an eighteen-hour notice. The first step would be to, I guess in a sense, have the clerk poll the council members as to what is a common date and time, which would add to any type of delays. So as, as a practical question, and I'm looking here, but anybody can dive in. What would you think that cap should be? And maybe I'll premise it with, right now we're at $230,000 with White Lake Excavating. And they're winding down, literally, if you go up to DPW, they're grinding things, everything's winding down. So the concern would be, you know, depending on, you never know how much a disaster or emergency is going to cost. So if the council had put a hundred thousand dollar expenditure cap on those emergency expenditures, you just said expenditures twice, we probably would have stopped, remember the storm that Tuesday? We probably would have stopped by Thursday or Friday. And had to have left streets blocked, residents trapped, and probably took a day or two or three. I, I, believe me, I am not comfortable, I'm not like, ooh, it's an open bank. And what's up?
She heard, turn off.
Her and I have been extremely nervous about all of this, but we're doing exactly what we need to do to get the city back where it's at. We met Monday with Brian Armstrong to start figuring out which fund is going to pay for what shares of that. So I'm not at all opposed to your concept, but it would really be difficult to put a number on that when you've got residents without power or possibly water and sewer and, you know, trees piled up in their yard. It's just such a huge unknown.
Love station, water main break.
Scott, what's the process?
Gas main break?
Yeah, that.
What's the process when that happens? I mean, you do those things, fortunately, it doesn't happen all that often. But those things happen, and then what's the process? So you make those expenditures, and then is it the following council meeting that you let people know?
Yeah, I'm supposed to report at the next available council meeting. It just says report, that doesn't mean the spending stops.
Right.
It's just to give you an update as to where we're at.
And just, why I asked that was that, would it be more practical to just kind of send updates as it happens? I mean, I know you can't do it at the moment because you're busy working through the emergency, but shortly after, just send a, hey, this is, just so it's not like a whoa, all at once kind of knowledge? I'm not sure if communication, you know, in the middle of it versus waiting till the next meeting is, would, would make it, would make it better.
Well, it was definitely a whoa, because we just got the invoice from White Lake Excavating a week, maybe two ago. I mean, we were kind of, we knew what the hourly costs were, the cost per day for the grinder, but not knowing exactly how many hours that piece of equipment, or those two men with the chainsaw, were going to take. So we had an idea, one of my early estimates was going to be at least $200,000. Not that I wanted to go nearly that high. So yes, as soon as we get those numbers, we'll, we'll start reporting them. And obviously, we got to do a budget amendment to cover these expenses. I forget which was the start of your comments.
Just kind of a running tab as those.
Yeah, as we get those numbers, we'll certainly pass them on to council.
My question would be more along the lines of, how long would it have taken to get another quote? As, you know, I assume that they got a quote, like immediately, to you?
Yeah.
But could you have made one more phone call or something to our comparison purpose or something like that?
We could have, but time was of the essence. Brian Armstrong touched base with White Lake Excavating, local company, and we knew from experience, they had the equipment, and they were readily available. To get another quote, if we follow our purchasing policy, obviously if it's over 10,000, he knew it was going to be way over 10,000, he would have been looking at four to six weeks. By the time we would have to prep the RFP, with a pretty good estimate as to quantities, hours, advertise that, allow proper time for advertising, receive the bids, staff review when we make a presentation.
How did you get a quote from them, then, from White Lake Excavating?
We called them up, and we said, are you available? We know you have the equipment, and what's your raw estimate as far as hour length?
You could have got that without going through all the other work too, but from another company? Maybe, I don't know who's in Muskegon or whatever, but it seems like it could have been, like it wouldn't have taken an awful long time to do that, I think. I mean, I'm, I'm just asking the question.
Right. I, I don't know how many, in the middle of the summer, how many people had that equipment just sitting around. Luckily, White Lake Excavating was in between projects. We could have, we could have started making some phone calls, and maybe that's a lesson learned, is to make more phone calls and ask, are you available, and what's your estimated price? Which is really hard, because White Lake didn't even know. We figured it would have taken them three or four days to do Mears Avenue, and I think it was clear in a day. So that was even, I mean, that was good for us and good for them. But under those circumstances, it's so hard to estimate.
But especially, like you just said, they, luckily they were in between projects.
Yeah.
If they had been on the project, you weren't going to go through all that extra process to get another quote anyway, right? I mean, I, it just seems like.
Yeah.
Or maybe in advance, we could have, I, you know, I looked at the emergency plans, and there's a list of suppliers and so on, but I think they were the only one listed. And, you know, quickly check that out sooner. The, one of the things I was surprised about is that they, both the water emergency plan and the plan that we have along with the city of Montevue are very old. One is thirteen years old, the other one is twenty years old, I believe. Some of the, you could have gone to the list of vendors, and some of them not even being business in there anymore, or things like that. It's like we should probably have multiple people listed.
Yeah, we can, we should probably update those. But yeah, we could look at trying to get quotes from other contractors under an emergency. But again, you know, it's going to be a narrow window, I can't call and say, give me a call back in three or four days. I mean, it's going to be pretty, pretty immediate. Especially in this instance, fire and ambulance and police had no access whatsoever. We had to take out a couple of bollards down, I was down in West Virginia, you guys still have that accent. So that we could at least get up, you know, to a part of the area. So, yeah, we can definitely keep that in mind as the next disaster happens. And I think maybe three times in my career here, we've done an emergency purchase, so it is very rare. This is the big one. And we'll definitely look to do that in the future, Mr. Ziegler.
I don't, I don't think we would have the time to, I don't think it would work out to wait for us to have a meeting or anything like that, I'm not saying that.
Right.
You know, maybe a.
A lot, a lot of time.
Maybe you could have called somebody and said, oh, he's out of chance or whatever.
A lot of times, it, because I was a part of those discussions, and some of the, that was going on, I was down there on Mears Avenue. And the discussions essentially is a lot of, you're gleaning from the people that are there to make, to be able to say, hey, who do you know that can do this? I mean, we, we were working for a while there, we hoped that we were going to get the DNR fire crew in. It's because somebody knew somebody on the fire crew, and they weren't doing anything currently. Under an emergent circumstance like this, you pretty much, you can write it on paper, but Murphy always plays into it. And you, you hope you have a good crew down there, or a good incident command group that has that knowledge of the area, and who can do what, and who might be available. You need to grab them, or you can grab them.
I would think, given how rare it's been, and given how long Scott's been with us, I would probably trust his judgment about getting quotes from people for emergency services. I mean, if it was a regular thing, that there were emergency allocations, I mean, that would, that would be, that would be different. I don't think it hurts to, you know, maybe update, you know, knowledge. On the other hand, I do think Scott probably knows who can, I would imagine that he would know who can do what needs to be done in the city. And then, then I would worry about apples to apples, do we get somebody who really doesn't know what they're doing? Because we haven't had enough time to get to know them or do due diligence. So I think, I, I do think it would help to get a better feel who's available. Just because you never know, they might not be available, they might be hemmed in, you know what I mean? You know, so I think that would be, you know, some, maybe a small lesson learned going forward. But I'm happy to let you use your own judgment myself.
And I did have no less than one sales pitch from every tree company that was in town. They were willing and dealing, and, you know, rather than start parcelling things off, basically it was RTW and White Lake Excavating under Brian's direction. We had a lot of volunteers show up, but the problem, I mean, volunteers are great, but in that situation, early on they were volunteering, we didn't know, you know, the extent of our cleanup and how we were going to proceed. So actually, I turned away a number of volunteers. I think there was a bus load from a church, I forget where they were from, that just kind of showed up, got off the bus and started working. So Brian ran down there and was like, hey, who are you and what are you doing? So sometimes you can get too much, well, meaning volunteers.
And we ran into, had to, we had to pull people out of there, so the electrician guys put the lines up and put poles in, I mean, it just. Love having the people, love the, the volunteerism, but sometimes they just become a hindrance. And you just got to hold them back until the time is right to let them go.
Now, we're all, you know, we're all related to the disaster that we just had. And that's where my question comes up too, but I still, I just think it needs, it needs a cap on it somewhere. I mean, you, the city has a fund balance after the, you know, after the fact of, you know, for the budget and everything else. And I think it ought to be related to a percentage of the fund balance. I mean, otherwise you could, I mean, you could bankrupt the city in a heartbeat. So, you know, that's like I said, we're, you know, we're all related to what, what just happened. But, which is probably good in a way, but not good that it happened. I just, I still think there should be a cap on it. Not a, not a per se dollar amount, but a percentage of whatever the city's fund balance is.
We could take a, and what I would look at is probably citywide, because water and sewer have a much larger fund balance. And if need be, we have the ability to loan interdepartmental. So if the general fund didn't have enough readily available fund balance, we can draw from some other sources. So I think we've got eight million in the bank in investments? Yeah, so, two thirty is a real comp, not real comfortable. I don't lose a lot of sleep in there compared to eight million.
Yeah.
So yeah, maybe for the floor, but that is. So yeah, maybe for the floor, but that is about thirty percent of our general fund, fund balance right now, so that's a huge gap. So we could take a look at that and bring something back.
All right, any further discussion? Then we'll move up to city manager's contract. At this point, I wanna say that I think Scott's done a great job managing the city and I would certainly like to keep him as long as he wants to stay. With that, we'll open it up for Mr. Brown, you brought it up.
Scott, do you have anything you wanna throw up there? Before, before we get, you know, go any deeper into it and, and waste a lot of time on it or?
Well, you're talking about me, so it wouldn't be a waste of any time.
Well, my selection of words probably won't be as much as that.
Um, the current contract expires middle of next August, August of twenty twenty five. And that puts me, well, not retirement age, don't know when that happened. But I guess right now, my intention is that upon expiration of the contract is that I would go to retirement. That doesn't mean that, because I, I, I will throw something else out there, that y'all have to really wrestle with in the next few months. But that doesn't preclude this council or another council asking for a new contract. But I think, you know, the automatic renewal is not necessary at this point. And I think the contract calls for either party to notify the other party in writing of their desire not to renew. So I would probably be submitting that to the city council. Seems like a long way away, about a month will be here, a month, a year, but we'll be here very quickly. So that would be my intention, is to submit a letter to the city council that upon expiration of my contract, I intend to retire from the city of Whitehall. The, the trickier part is going through the process of hiring a new city manager. So the city council currently sitting would have to decide whether or not they wanna go through the process, hire a new city manager so that, you know, the day after I retire, he or she is sitting in that lovely, sometimes heated office. We'll have to put that in the advertisement. The, the drawback to that is that would probably be mid-August and four of you are up for reelection. Don't know if you're all planning to run again or whether or not you get reelected, but it could be the situation where after two and a half months on the job, the new city manager is a full holder council. Or you can opt to let the new council have that privilege, which means sometime in probably late November, December, it's horrible time of year, because hunting season to New Year's, there's, you know, there's that holiday season. So that would probably push out having a new city manager on until February of twenty twenty six. So, not to complicate it, but you know, for the narrow issue, that's on the agenda. That's my intention, is to be retired middle of August of twenty twenty five. And then you will start ha- having to decide how you wanna proceed with replacement. Right now, if this council did it, you have plenty of time. You've got a year. And you're probably talking, you know, if you give a new person thirty days to get notice and be on board, probably back the process up at least two to three months, so you probably need four months from first day of advertising to having somebody in that chair. So now you've got plenty of time. If you wait for a new council who could possibly be four new people who have sat on a public body before, suddenly going through a very important process in a short window. Because that would probably push you up till March of twenty twenty six.
Well, one other thing that would factor into the timing too would be that if you wait until after the election, then you missed that opportunity for a potential manager who has kids, that he wants to get settled in school and so on.
Yep.
So I think that would argue for getting it done by August, would be my input.
I mean, you, it's, that part's not on the agenda, you can have some time to mull it over. We'll probably have it on a work session in the near future. But just kind of that little sidetrack to throw at you.
Well, I would, I would like to make it as an agenda item for our next work session. My, my personal preference with, right now, would be, is if you're gonna be leaving, the quicker, like you said, we got all, you know, advertising and then narrowing people down and what have you. I, I, none of us have ever done this before, so, you know, it's all, it's gonna be new to all of us. My preference would be, I don't, I don't know if there's money to be able to do it that way or not. Would be at least three months before you left, already have a new one hired and you work together. You know, as a training kind of thing for a new person coming on. You've, you've got more knowledge than anybody about the city. So, you know, rather than just, you're done one day and somebody else starts the next day and it's a blank, it's a blank slate. I would prefer somebody being here on board, being able to pick your brain for as long as they can. I mean, that, but like you said, if, if we have it as a discussion item for our next work session, maybe we can start working out some of the details of how we're gonna go about doing it and, you know, what all it's gonna involve. Like I said, I don't think there's anybody, even in our, other than you, in the city government that's been here long enough to, you know, what it's like to hire a city manager.
We've been involved with other clients in that process too, and I know we've got a little summary we could get to, you guys ahead of time of some thoughts on that process that, that we would want, maybe wanna take a look at. So I can have that for the next meeting if you'd like.
Would you, would you say that four months is enough? That, I don't know if that's enough time or not.
Yeah.
I would think you probably want a little bit more.
Yeah, well, especially if you do wanna do, have somebody here earlier.
Yep.
Four to six months, I think is.
If you are going to retire at the end of this contract, as you suggested, would, would it be that day? I mean, the day is set and that's it, or could that possibly be extended a few months or something like that? In case, you know, we wanted to have some type of a training or an overlap, type of, a few months or something.
Consulting type thing, see?
Yeah. I think the, you could do that, but probably to clean us, I, I wouldn't think more than four weeks would be necessary. I mean, we could go six.
Yeah.
So if I'm mid-August, then you could hire, have somebody hired by July first.
Okay.
So that way, there's not, I mean, there's that overlap, but not an extension.
Okay. So you wanna be gone.
Well, it's no reflection to the community, the people I work for, the people I work with. But, you know, every now and then, and, you know, I had to wait a little bit longer, because I am younger than Amy Van Loon and Jerry McDowell.
What year did you start?
Two thousand and one.
Two thousand and one.
On the second tour, the first was nineties. When was the first tour? Early nineties to mid-nineties?
In Whitehall?
Yeah. I was the administrative assistant city clerk, first time around, then I went on for six years.
Oh.
So ninety-one to ninety-five?
Well, I must have been on the planning commission or something when you retired. It seemed like I remember a, a committee of career, whatever council, the people that did like the interviews of the people who were possibilities that, that showed an interest.
Yep.
These people were on, and I think there was other, others that would look back to, I'd have to look back to it, but I might have been on a council that when you came in, I don't remember.
It's a long time ago.
It was a long time.
I think you might have, I think, I think you might have been, because I got on fall of two thousand and five and I think you might have been on already and maybe even Jeff.
On the planning commission.
Oh, okay, okay, sorry, my. Yeah.
I was on the planning commission shortly after I moved into the city, which was ninety-five. And I asked Wally, if there was anything open. And he said, well, we got home there in the planning commission. So it was only like a year after I was in the city, so I was on the planning commission. I was on there for three years and then I was like the council part. Actually appointed the council to fill out John.
Johnny Nagles.
Yep. Final two years of his term and then got reelected. And I don't know the exact, uh, dates of that, but I do remember the process of the interviews with you and others that, you know, and it took a while, because you had to, you know, get your crew together, whether it was three council members, do you remember? I don't remember.
Um, I believe it was three council members, I think it was Norm Omen, Roger Westbury. His grandson is now married to my daughter, so that was, isn't it back then?
Yeah.
And I forget who the third one, I think it was Dave Elvin was the third.
Okay, yeah.
I, I do wanna add myself, I think it's really important for us to have a transition, so.
Yeah.
Yep. Cool, and I can put something together for the next meeting.
Anything more on that subject? All right, then we'll move up to the elementary student drop-off. Again, Mr. Brown.
Hey, you know, I, I know you were waiting for Mr. McDowell to, you know, come and maybe lead us through something or whatever, but since he's not here, I just, I mean, school's almost ready to start again. We've had this on the agenda for probably three or four months and we just keep kicking the can down the road and the problems not getting solved. So, I mean, anybody that's tried to go up and down that road during drop-off time, it's a hazard. You, you can't see from the side streets to, to go across. You're driving down the wrong side of the road, if you're, you know, heading south, you got people shaking their fists at you, cussing at you, shaking, you know, just.
It, it, it's just an accident waiting to happen.
I just feel that, you know, we need to address the issue one way or another. You know, to me, the best way to, to partially fix it is you could only come down to the corner of Sophia there, that's in front of the elementary school. And then it turns and all the traffic backs up down Sophia. Not down the only main connector that there is between, you know, between Division and Warner. I mean, that, that's the only road that goes from Alice Street all the way to Colby. You know, and it's a mess for a half an hour in the morning and a half an hour in the afternoon. So, you know, I'm really surprised we haven't had more issues than we have had. I know there's been a few businesses, or at least one business along there, that couldn't even get in and out of their own parking lot because, I mean, those people get in line and they don't wanna move. You know, they're, they're not gonna give up their spot. People start pulling forward and a nut car behind them pulls forward and they're half out in the middle of the intersection 'cause of the, 'cause the line didn't move as far as they thought. And they're not gonna get back out of line because they're hanging out in the middle of the intersection, they're just gonna sit there. And, you know, I just think it's, it needs changed and if the school isn't willing to change it, then the city needs to change. I'll just leave my comments at that and if anybody else thinks it's a disaster waiting to happen or not, they can throw theirs out or what has any problems with it.
I, I, as the one that initially brought it up, I do have a problem with it. I, again, if you look at the edge of the roadway, I mean, we're paying a lot of money for roadways and they're breaking that asphalt up, the, the life of that asphalt is becoming less and less. Or looking at, looking at the schematic of the schools and everything else, I mean, we've, being a townie and going to school there, they've done multiple changes in traffic patterns and pickups. Right now, we've got more pickup people than I've ever seen. I mean, it's, I've never seen it like this. It's, I mean, there's forty, fifty cars down that road to pick up kids when a bus can take them where they gotta go. I think that something could be developed, because they've got, it's probably two to three lanes wide across the street that goes in front of the middle school, that they can utilize that part of that driveway, whether it's a single line, a double line, and then they go across the street. I mean, there's, there's, there's options, there has to be options that they can look at. And, and I agree with them already moving the head up, but, I mean, the kids will have to walk down the sidewalk and get in. I mean, that's, I don't know, they've got plenty of property there, they've got a ball field and a big huge playground that really is underutilized, that they could probably do something with as well, to develop another turn lane or something like that. But yeah, it's, it's something that needs to be done, it, it really does. It's, I don't see it getting any better. I don't see parents all of a sudden deciding not to come pick and drop their kids off. And in my day, most, you know, like, I sound like my parents, we walk the billable ways to school, but.
In the snow.
In the snow, yeah, exactly. That was part of the fun. Yeah, something, something needs to be developed and, and worked on to fix some of the issues.
I don't, I don't know if they could even maybe stagger get out times, you know, from school and drop-off times.
That's all, 'cause that's all, that's all elementary. That's, well, upper alley, I guess it would be, students, that's not even, that's not even Charline or any other places.
Is it not possible a street that dead ends in the parking lot on the west side of the school, could that not be put as a through street that goes up to the parking lot?
It goes through their parking lot, I think that's where they got their buses now, isn't it?
All the other one?
That's the bus pickup. The bus pickup started on the front of the school and they used to pull the buses in and angle them. And then they changed it and moved the buses over to that, which used to be, when I was in school, was playground. So they took that out, moved the playground to the backside. So now it's all, that's all just parking, where that, that was the elementary playground on the other school, so.
It seems like they could make a pass through there or something, just have a one-way through there for pickup or something, I don't know.
Yeah.
Doesn't seem like it'd be that hard. It doesn't have to be a city street, I would think.
We'll head it up by grade and have, you know, from Alice Street coming in up to the school on a, on a backside by the ball field. You know, one grade, you're dropping your kids off and picking your kids up if they're in third grade there. You know, and the fourth grade's out on, you know, Sulcam and, you know, do it, do it by different grades.
Livingston's a part on the other side by Constance, what is it?
The, the, the school's concerns from having conversations with Dr. McDowell is that, you know, it's a, it's a safety and security now, because you've got the school entrance basically on Elizabeth now. So the further, the schools get nervous, the further away those kids are from that central drop-off where they've got a little, a greater degree of control. With them shifting it closer to Alice, what they're now doing is stationing a teacher or an administrator down at Dana versus the kids just.
They don't want the kids, they don't want the kids to go from there to out through the door versus the potential wandering.
Yeah, so, so that's one of their concerns, but we can, the chief and I and Brian can sit down with Dr. McDowell and the school principal again and kick around, you said kicking down the road, we're not gonna do that, but kick around some of these ideas. Because I do know that the schools, they continually look at their drop-offs, their buses and the parents and council member Holmstrom, you're right. It's, I know years back when.
They still talk about. It's been everywhere, we used, they used to shut that intersection off with the other buses and they parked the buses along Elizabeth Street for a while and, yeah, they, they've tried everything with that.
So we can chat with the schools and bring something back, maybe before school starts? Or just notify council what we've done, because school starts Monday.
To say that the school gets is important, but to say to you, the people driving on the roads is important.
Consent to school kids is important, but to say to people driving on roads is important too.
Yeah, and it's, it's almost becoming, I don't know if it would be considered an attractive nuisance where people that regularly drive in that area kinda know what they're gonna get into at those times of day and probably have a heightened sense of when kids are gonna be running across the street and in and out of cars. I, I say that, but at least once a week I get caught in how that shift change traffic.
Yeah.
You know, after twenty plus years or, you know, by the post office, it's like, what am I doing here? But we'll, we'll talk to Mr. McDowell, Dr. McDowell, um, probably in the next day or two and kick around some ideas again.
Does the school, do you know, ever made an attempt to, uh, promote ride sharing, for instance, uh, so that one mother or father is picking up four kids, you know, three of the neighbor's kids in addition to theirs or something like that, I don't know.
I, I don't think they ever have. Um, I do know that, you know, the parent drop-off has come through the roof as, um, Mr. Holmstrom has mentioned.
You used to get this big yellow and black dude that took you to school. Which had its own set of problems.
Well, a lot more kids walked, but, but, I mean, our culture's different too. I mean, you know, parents work very different shifts, you know what I mean? So it's all very individual. That's why we probably didn't have much luck with busing. Cause everybody has their own very unique schedule.
And I think a lot of it, I know with my daughters, once they get to a certain age, it wasn't cool to ride the bus. So until they got their driver's license, I would drop them off at the high school. Which, you know, same traffic backup, but that was all contained on site with the new high school.
Same thing with Shoreline, it's pretty much, pretty much. It does pop down Livingston and T. A. L.
They're running into some issues down there.
Yeah, so. And the, and it's back in the old head, people are so angry and bitter nowadays. I mean, we had the lady coming here during public comment that, that works at that place and so we go out and tell these people, "Hey, you gotta let our people in and out," and she got yelled at, I mean.
Yeah.
Ew. It's, it's like.
Well, it is crazy. I was, I was going to res buffer schools and I'm a slow driver anyway, so don't get behind me if you're fast, but looking for the driveway and I was in the twenty-five mile an hour lane, right, or, you know, somebody's behind me shaking their fist at me. It went around and I'm like, gosh, I was in the twenty-five mile an hour looking for the little driveway and it's just like, what? I was, I mean, it's not the highway, you know? People are just kinda, kinda fast.
Everybody's always in a hurry to get nowhere.
Should've left home five minutes sooner and then we'd have.
Exactly.
Just got way downtown when we changed from four lanes to two. People got used to that. But that was the big thing that we had people call, say, "Oh, say, I was in the fourth lane, took a way in, driving lane." You should've left five minutes earlier.
That's correct. Yeah, I, I'm looking at this site. I, I'm sorry, Steve, I, I see there's, there's options. I'm looking at, I got the map up of that area and there's, there's options. They should be able to work for something. I think we've got this to, to that. You said it?
Nope.
You said it, not, uh, do we have any informational items we needed? For any people who didn't. I hope everyone, uh, read the, the letter concerning the fireworks. Real concern that, uh, certainly would like to see the fireworks continue, but without, uh, public engagement and support, it's for sure it's gonna go away. All right, let's move to public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone to, uh, speak, make a statement. Please limit it to three minutes if you can. If there is no, I'd like no public comment. Anything anybody else wants to say? All right, we're adjourned.
Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and its人民党like for which it stands on the nation under your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, first up is approval of the agenda.
I will make caution for the agenda as submitted.
Second.
Is it in the second? Is there any discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those who say no? We have approved the agenda. Next is the consent agenda.
I will move for the approval of the consent agenda.
Second. I moved in second. Is there any discussion?
I have one question on the zoning board of appeals minutes. I wasn't able to come to that meeting. It appears somebody was wanting to use a container. As like a shed or residence.
A shipping container for a shed.
Shed. And. It failed. Did it fail because it was a shipping container or did it fail because? He was asking for a dimensional variance or doesn't really make any sense.
Well, it primarily failed because it was a shipping container which was not aesthetically compatible. That was the first decision was if they approved it as a, as an allowable use, then they would have acted on the actual dimensional variance. So if they're not going to allow it, then it doesn't matter where it sits because it's not considered.
We went through it before with Omet and that was on Air Crawford.
Correct. And same thing here.
Okay, I just, I wasn't sure. Like I said, it failed, but I just wanted clarification of why it failed, whether it was because it was a shipping container. I don't know that there's a lot of people that know maybe a lot of shipping containers were.
Correct. And they would know if they asked instead of putting it in place. Begging forgiveness doesn't matter.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else have anything?
I have a question on that. The big expenditure for Handland Corporation, Pocket Park, lots, Goodrich. No, that's the repaving of the lots.
Yep, the commission at Goodrich Park, the three parking lots, and then the Pocket Park. Which is awaiting arrival of the bathroom in September to be completed.
So we're paying for it actually before we get it?
Oh, no.
Oh.
No, not, I mean, we have paid the down payment. We're buying the bathroom direct. It was just a mix-up between the contractor, the engineer, and the city. So we are doing, we have already made the down payment on that.
So is it, so this isn't the final bill for?
Nope.
All that?
Nope.
So that's just a small part of the Pocket Park?
Correct.
Over three hundred and fifty thousand? Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those who say no? Alright, consent agenda is approved. Next up, the judges. Senior manager, hear me, messages for us.
Um, I think the only thing, I don't know, I sent out a few emails, but they do plan to pave Warner Street Thursday or Friday, whether it's Monday. And it's supposed to rain. If it's a light rain, it can still pave. If it's a heavy rain, it won't.
Is that also division?
Yeah, there's division and. And there's three other spots. But yeah, they'll all get paved at the same time.
Except for mirrors. Mirrors is further down the road in front of the post office.
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly when they're doing that because they ground everything up except in front of mirrors.
If they could just go another twenty feet down Benson Road, they could dig out a whole bunch of pumps there. And there's, and also a jump that takes a square rectangular piece that's beyond their, the end of their line where it looks like they're gonna pave.
I think that was an oops when we get to south end of Warner Street.
Oh.
Big square. Is it around a manhole?
It's on the right-hand side, close to the edge of the road. And you know, where the, where the paving part ends, it's maybe four or five feet down that. Fifty, well, I don't know, it would look nice to get ahead of it for twenty feet or so east on Benson, but I don't know.
Scott, are they gonna do some reseeding of the grass, like on the corners and along the road?
Yep, restoration will be part of the project.
Okay, and that will be directly following?
Uh, yeah, because they typically will want to take advantage of two rainy seasons, rainy seasons, fall and spring. So they should, they will probably be in right after that, right after the road's done.
Okay.
Alright, I'm, I'm still curious about the Warner project and, and. You know, we had asked, it had been asked twice in meetings earlier whether this was going to be a mill and repaved. At both times it was said, no, it's not going to be a mill and repaved. And then it got. And then following the last meeting that we had, I think it was, you sent around the email saying that, I'm sorry, it is going to be a mill and repaved. And. I'm wondering when that changed, what changed?
It, was it? It never changed. I misspoke.
Okay. If, if it's, how much asphalt is going to be put down?
I don't know.
I drove the whole thing and there's one place at least where there's a strip of dirt about twenty-five feet long. It's down, you know, right down to the dirt. And when they run into something like that, does that? Do they give that any special treatment or anything? I mean, that.
I would have to look at the specifics of that to be an answer.
I don't know much about, I don't know anything about road construction, but there's so many different. Layers and levels that have been exposed and all that. I don't, if this doesn't. Okay, so there's, it's not been, it's not been changed and. Okay, I guess that's it.
Alright, let's get on with the council. Steve, start it.
I have nothing tonight.
Okay.
I have nothing either.
Uh, got a couple of things. I'm just curious of, I took a drive down country club, gee, all those guys. There's like still two houses down there that have trees completely thrown weed. I know it's nothing weakened, but you haven't, have you heard anything about those? Have not. I'm, 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 yeah, I don't know if they're waiting on insurance, whether they're vacant, whether they're seasonal or what, but.
Most likely insurance or contractors.
Okay. As I say, when does it, when does it come down to the point where from a safety aspect, we, as a city, need to do something about condemnation or something like that? A while, I'm assuming.
Yeah, um, if it's, yeah. Locals take a look at those and see where they're at, if any building permits have even been moved.
Yeah, and it's like not even, I mean, it's not like grazed, it's like through. I was, like I said, I drove down there, I was shocked that they were still in that, that state. So I mean, the trees have been.
The other stuff got cleaned up.
Yeah, now you can see it. Yeah, it's like, jeez, a bee. Um, the other thing is, I know it was on the mayor's Facebook page and somebody else had posted, if you guys get a chance, take a look at the North Mirrors gathering. From last night. I was unable to make it down there, but it was huge. It was huge. And that's really all I have. Thanks.
Tom?
Um, I don't have anything.
Well, just that the senior committee continues to meet and work, work on the survey. And I've got, Scott can attest to this, I've got some folks who have a lot of good thought and I've got two committee members who are actually reworking it for us. So I've got working committee members. So it's, it's just, I think it's a great way to involve people a little bit more in government.
We got a lady out from Muskegon.
Yeah.
Two weeks ago for a meeting to enlighten us a little bit more of what was available by the county. So. We're making progress.
Lisa Tyler with the senior resources. And she gave us an annual report showing us like different communities are doing. And I, I, we would like to down the road have her come to speak to council. She was really informative about the history of the village and. Dismersments and things. We, we really appreciated that. So that is the senior, which is still moving forward. They're, they're very thorough, I think. Also, I've been checking in with some folks in the country club Collier Drive area and. It's, I, I know them, so I'm checking in with them and it is still. It's still a mess. Still a mess. And what I'm wondering, you know, I keep reaching out and saying, you know, how can I help? How can the city help? But I wonder if we could pull together a neighborhood meeting or something, Scott, and just see, is there a way that we could at least? I, I would like to hear from folks about where they're at and what the plans are and what the city can do to help. I mean, I know we're already deep in, in, you know. Money-wise, but I, this, I don't think this has ever happened. I mean, I think even ninety-eight was not this bad. And there are people who are not living in their homes. And it's just a huge upheaval for them and I would like to be more present, even though I know, I know you have. But I, I would like to see if we could pull them together, if that's possible and, and maybe even in the neighborhood somewhere. I don't know. I, I'd like to see us, see what we can do to help.
The church down there might not be a bad.
Oh, that's a great idea. Yeah. And I'm sure Reverend Ogden would be open to that.
Or either Lebanon or the one down.
Oh, Congregational.
Congregational, ones of Moses.
Yeah, that's true.
We, we are working with a consultant on a meeting date for a lot of the residents that might be having difficulty with the insurance companies. From what I've heard from a lot of the residents is if a tree fell on a structure, it's taken care of. If it's on the yard?
Yeah.
No coverage.
Yeah.
And we have to be careful because state law prohibits us from lending the credit of the city for most private expenditures. I mean, there's, I mean, we just can't hire somebody in there and go do it for the private residents.
Could we also just bring in any county folks just to, I mean, I know there was that meeting that was held in Muskegon, but I. I, I think we, I'd like to see if we could help more and to what extent we can. Or at least just show, you know, continue the presence and pull people together and chat with them. I, I mean, one, one of my acquaintance was out of power for three weeks. And out of her house. And she's still out of her house and they're almost tearing it down to the studs and having to build it back up. And now, now granted, I know that's a personal, private matter and expense, but I, that neighborhood is truly a bit bad. I feel for people there.
Yep, we'll have, we'll coordinate that with the consultant.
Do you know when that might be, Scott?
We don't. Brenda and I have been communicating with, you know, as far as a common day.
Maybe they could speed it up? Sorry, I need to speak more into the mic, but maybe they could speed it up. I just, you know, fall is coming. It's getting cold.
Yep.
Doug?
Okay.
Last week I spent two days in Big Rapids at the Michigan Association of Mayors' summer workshop. It was a good time spent talking with other mayors. Somewhat disappointed that there were thirty-four mayors and I'm sure there's a lot more than thirty-four cities in the state of Michigan. But it was, it was good to talk with other mayors and, and hear their challenges, their successes. So I think it was money well spent by the council. Very much appreciate having the opportunity to, to talk with my peers. With that, we'll move on to public comment. Step up and give your name. Try to stick it to three minutes.
Kim Seer, County Commissioner, District One, which includes the city of Whitehall. Just want to tell you that I have enjoyed serving you for the last couple of years. Helping out where I can and keeping you informed of what's going on at county level. I am going to run for office again and I would appreciate your vote. And for those of you that don't vote for me, I love you anyway.
I brought my timer.
Sorry?
Just in case I go over. So I'm gonna set it for three minutes, which I don't think I will. Val Barnes, twelve oh three King Street, Sweden Town. Yes. I'm here to try to understand how the city and the police can have different policies on mental health issues. It seems to me how it's handled depends on if it's a man or a woman. I realize Steve Salter has been going through these mental health episodes from his neighbor for years. But let me tell you about our neighborhood, what we went through two years ago. July fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, Kathy Atchison wakes up to a pounding on her door at five AM. It'll come to find out it was the neighbor's son that just got out of prison after twenty years for armed robbery and kidnapping. You should know, she was terrified. She still has PTSD. So well after the police got there and took him away, Kathy was told she could not press charges because it was a mental health issue. Even though they, and there was no intent, even though they found a knife in her flower pot by her door. So they wouldn't even, they wouldn't even let her do victim services. This woman still has PTSD. And then they said that she would go for a seventy-two hour psych exam and he was home in four hours. Four hours. And then that next winter, we had the SWAT team there because he tried to kill his mother, but she still let him back. Oh, wait a minute, alright.
That's not, you still have another.
Alright, and so then, you know, like I said, she can't go and lock her daughter for a long time because the casing broke, the door casing broke. So then, this past spring, he was sitting on his roof on his house and they brought victim services for them, you know? And then they brought the ladder truck and stuff, but the policeman said, well, he's not breaking any law. It's not against law to sit on your roof. So then why are we wasting our taxpayers' money to bring the ladder truck and victim services and, and that? And it's like. So my point is, is do we treat different mental health? People that are having mental health break downs different because they're a man or, or a woman? Because he was, he's, he's a convicted felon. He has, we have called the cops many, many, many times. They don't, if he, if they knocked on his door, he don't have to let them in. And we're stuck with sleepless nights. There's a lot, a lot of single women that live in the neighborhood. And I have lived in that house for forty-eight years. I never felt like I had to move. And it's coming to that. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, good evening. My name is Adrian Haldar. In the spirit of helping the neighborhood that was hit so hard, I had an idea to do a community fundraiser to make the G Street Park better. I'm not really sure where to step forward with that idea, so I wanted to come and talk with you guys and see if there's a plan for that park already. How to like operate with you guys and kind of move forward on that. I think that would just be a great thing to make that park even better than it is now. My kids love to play there. It's such a great, nice secluded area for kids to play safely, away from big roads. And I would just love to see it be just a really great place for our community. And so I'm just not sure how to step forward with that idea and what that looks like towards it with you guys in that spirit.
Thank you. Is, is it too soon to have a plan for what we're going to do with the G Park? Following the loss of the trees and everything?
Um, we currently have a grant in with the Michigan Department of Natural Resources for improvements. We have ordered the replacement base structure. But beyond that, we haven't done any extensive planning.
Would be great to.
I got, I got a question for you. How many kids roughly in? I know you have kids. How many kids have you seen or do you know neighbor-wise down there? Because I know that area is essentially flipped. I mean, the older people and younger people are moving in. I was just curious.
Yeah, I mean, I personally know two other families that live in there. We live close to there, not in that neighborhood. Who like the love that's actually great too. Their kids already do play there. So I do see it as an area where there are a lot of young families, even with the bike trail being right there. I see a lot of people kind of walking across. Mirrors there, utilizing the bike trail, often playing at the church's playground and things like that. And so I just think it would be such a great little piece of property and like how great would it be to be an awesome place structure there, even a walking path. There's not any sidewalks in that neighborhood and, and just to make it really great for our, for our community.
Is it possible that Adrian could work with, or could talk with Brian or something? Maybe she and some of the other people in the area that use that park be involved in fighting for it?
I'd love to see some kind of community effort in that park. As with any effort, it needs a champion.
Yeah.
This is how you follow.
Exactly. This idea, I'm like, well, I have this idea, like I have to move forward with it. I can't just say, hey, I got a great idea. Like it needs, someone needs to work towards that.
I would say, yeah, please move forward with this and, and take a pulse of what the people in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Want to do and, and certainly we should talk with. want to do and certainly we should talk with staff. Yes, correct. Talk with staff and see what we can do to come together as a community in that park for the benefit of those people.
Would it be possibly part of that meeting that you plan to get all the residents together? Would that be a time to survey them or talk to them or anything like that?
Kind of thinking if that's, would that be something to, you know, if people are, if people are all together then, Scott, would that be? I think so. I think that'd be a great time for you to at least survey people or tell them your idea and see if you could get some more willing volunteers.
And list a few, a few of the people that are interested in it as you are.
Yeah, well, I think so. Then it's a fabulous idea.
Thank you very much.
Question for Scott on, I don't know, something. She's talking, was talking about maybe like getting a group together and doing a public fundraising or whatever. If, if a group gets together and does something like that, can they donate money to the city for a specific use and can the city pay the money?
Yes, and yes. And we've done that. We've had a number of people pay for a bench in memory of somebody as well as art structures and maybe there's fundraising for the splash pad. So we'll work with the residents that want to be involved on the fundraising and how if they say we want a certain specific thing and they raise the funds for it, then we'll see that it gets done.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Okay, move on to old business.
Hi, my name is Asia Rash and I just wanted to bring it to the city's attention that there is some plants. It's a plant called Deterastramonium or known as Jimson weed. And it is growing along the bike path and a few other areas that I've noticed. This plant can be used as a deliriant drug and can be abused. And it can be very easy to have overdoses occur from it. There are a lot of high school students who will seek out this plant to use as a deliriant drug. So I just wanted to bring it to the attention of the city that this should be removed. I am concerned about it. Also, in the spirit of improving parks, I am an environmental consultant and a botanist. And I would be happy to provide my services in free church, in providing plant lists and doing invasive species management plans, native species, anything environmentally related to that.
Are you, were you a resident of the city?
I am, yeah.
Wonderful. Yes, please. Yes, please. Bring your services to us.
I would hope to, yeah.
What was that plant that you spoke of?
It's called Deterastramonium or Jimson weed.
How do you spell that, Jimson?
J, I, um, S, O, weed. Yeah, Jimson weed. Yeah, and I also do have GPS coordinates of the spots that I have observed it and I would be happy to provide that.
So at, at this point, I would direct you to make contact with our staff. Stop by City Hall and Scott, would you prefer to talk to you or, or Brian?
Probably Brian. I know that we were made aware of this and we have offered you services of Conservation District to do vegetation management on the pathways, Spoken Trail, Cobo Park. So we'll, we'll double check and see if there's already a plan to take care of this weed.
All right, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you very much. There's no further public comment? Old business? I don't believe we have any old business. We do have new business, Resolution twenty-four, twenty-six, Commercial Rehabilitation Public Hearing. Scott, do you want to give us just a little?
Council has indicated a desire to establish a Commercial Rehabilitation District along Coby Streets. We already have one just east of Livingston, going through the downtown. This would be a second district that would provide the opportunity for some tax breaks for certain developments and rehabilitation. First step is for the city council to establish a public hearing in regards to your intent to establish a district. You have to notify all the property owners and the advertisements and I believe the tax and jurisdictions as well.
All right.
I have a question. I'll wait till it gets on the table. I'll move Resolution twenty-four, twenty-six. A public hearing for tonight's half or for future?
Okay, so.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, okay, of August for the Commercial Rehabilitation District.
All second. All right, we have it. Motion and a second. It's turning.
I have a question. I have one. Scott, is there a reason we stopped the hack lot short of Tiffa? Is that just an error?
Nope, that's not an error. The existing commercial district will butt up to the west end of this, this new one. So we've got the commercial, we've got the Tiffa district and the commercial district, current commercial rehab district actually goes outside of the Tiffa district a little bit.
Oh, okay, all right.
So it's going to be one continuous from Peterson to Thompson.
Yeah, I was just worried about that one little block here that kind of looks like it got excluded, but it's.
It's already in the commercial.
Sounds good.
Okay, anyone else have any questions, comments?
I just have a, a quick reminder. I thought that there was some kind of conflict that it wasn't going to be able to be in existence for very long and so we weren't going to pursue it. Am I thinking of something else?
Nope, you're, you're on track. The act actually sunsets December thirty-one of twenty twenty-five. Whether or not the state legislature reuse it and continues it, it would be up to them. But property owners within the district would have up to a year, a little more than a year, to actually apply for reimbursement.
And then if it gets extended, we could extend that. Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Rule call please.
Olmstrom?
Yes.
Sicking up?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Zimmer?
Yes.
Hillebrand?
Yes.
Cabala?
Yes.
Falter?
Yes. Resolution twenty-four, twenty-six is approved. Next up is a public comment. Anyone in the room have anything they want to say? Thank you all for coming. We appreciate your input. We're adjourned.